The session is now called to order.
Honorable Gabriel H. Bordado, City Presiding Officer, Honorable Elmer Valdimoro, City Councilor present, Honorable Jesse Albius, City Councilor present, Honorable Hilgy Rosales, Member, City Councilor absent, Honorable Vito Borja the Second, present, Honorable Hilda Gail Abunal Gomez, present, Honorable Milbin Ramon Buenafe, present, Honorable Wilfredo Jude Jocno, present, Honorable Francisco M. Mendoza, present, Honorable Alan Riz Makaraig, present, Honorable David Casper Nathan, present, Honorable Maria Corazon Penyaflor, not yet around, Honorable Jepson Romeo Felix, present.
Kindly take your seats please. Proceed with the...
Sir, backroom, can we...
Okay, you recognize the incoming senior citizens officials?
... Secretary?
Okay, let me acknowledge all the other officials. We start with the Vice Mayor, my counterpart, Honorable Mayor Laflor Acabado. Please take your seat here. The city councilors, Honorable Ernesto de la Cruz, the counterpart of Councilor Elmer Valdimoro, Honorable Simeon Jesus Adan Junior, the counterpart of Councilor Jesse Albius, Honorable Josefa Rustia, the counterpart of Councilor Ouyng Rosales, Honorable Ruth Zapanta, the counterpart of Doctor Vito Borja, City Councilor, Honorable Maria Nilda de Guzman, the counterpart of Councilor Gail Abunal Gomez, Honorable Jose Ilo, the counterpart of Councilor Omar Buenafe, Honorable Gloria V. Chavez, the counterpart of Councilor Jude Jocno, Honorable Corazon Milano, the counterpart of Councilor Frank Mendoza, Honorable Teresa Camata, the counterpart of Councilor Aris Makaraig, Honorable Lili Bel Larawre, she will be the counterpart of Councilor David Casper Nathan Seryo, Honorable Anita Del Miguez, the counterpart of Liga ng Mga Barangay Chairman, Maria Corazon Penyaflor, and Honorable Gloria Corod, the counterpart of Councilor and SK Federation Chairman, Jepson Felix. The Chair declares the presence of the quorum. Madam Secretary.
Next is the prayer.
All rise. Let's pray. Dear Lord, as we deliberate in today's session, give us the wisdom to overcome passion, give us that understanding heart to do away with prejudice, give us the foresight to know what the future may devise, give us the courage and strength to seek the truth and what is good, give us the facility of language that we may be understood, and finally, our Lord, make us worthy public servant of this city we deeply love and highly honor, Naga City the heart of Beagle.
Next is the pampansang awit.
Bayang magilim, handa awit.
Bayang magilim, orasang sila nanan, alak ng puso sa driti mo'y buhay. Lupa ang hinirang, duwag ng maditin sa mandulupin. Hita pasisiil sa dagat at bundok sa simula, sa damit mong buhaw, may dila gamdula at awit sa paglaimi na mahal. Ang isap ng watawat mo'y kagumpay nanan at niningling, ang bituin at araw niyang kailan pa may pinagdidilig. Lupa ng araw ng lwan, hatit pagsinta, buhay ay langit sa piling mo. Amen. Ligaya ng pag may mag-aapi, ang mamatay niyang dahil sayo.
Again, good morning and welcome to our senior citizens counterparts. Madam Secretary.
Next is the privilege time.
Any member of the council who wishes to deliver privileged speeches? Councilor Valdimoro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the Honorable Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer, Gabriel H. Bordado Junior, the Senior Citizen Vice Mayor, Madam Mayor Laflor Acabado, my esteemed colleagues, my dear senior citizens officials, especially to my counterpart, the President of Basca Abelia, Mr. Ernesto de la Cruz, our esteemed guests, fellow employees in the city government, friends and media, those watching via livestream, mga kapwa ko nagpapadangat sa mga senior citizens, mga namumutan kong nagenyo, Diyos maray na agapo sa indogabos. I take this opportunity to raise on a matter of personal and collective privilege to mark a very special occasion, the Senior Citizen Month this October 2025, a month dedicated to the lives, legacies, and invaluable contribution of our elder citizens. Senior Citizens Month is a time when we, as a community, pause and pay tribute to the generation that came before us, the people whose hands built the foundation upon which we now stand. We must always remember that our elderly are more than just retirees. They are teachers, mentors, pioneers, and heroes in their own right. Their role in society should not be confined to nostalgia or ceremony. It must translate into real respect, practical support, and active participation in governance and development. Thus, it is both pride and humility that I recall my role as the author of Ordinance Number 2015-065. This legislative measure formally moved the celebration of Senior Citizens Month in Naga City from November to October, aligning our local observance with the nationally-declared Elderly Filipino Week every October 1 to 7, as provided under Proclamation Number 470 Series of 1994. We pass this ordinance to synchronize our efforts with national programs to maximize participation in nationwide activities, and most importantly, to give our senior citizens the recognition they deserve within a broader and more impactful framework. By moving our celebration to October, we made sure that our programs are not isolated, but part of a unified national movement to promote the rights and welfare of the elderly. Today, a whole decade after the ordinance was passed, I am delighted to see how it has led to more meaningful, sustained, and high-impact celebrations. More than activities and programs, it has spurred policy discussions, community engagement, and government focus on issues such as healthcare, pensions, accessibility, and inclusion for the elderly. They are representative of a sector whose voices we must continue to hear and listen to in public discourse. To the newly-appointed senior citizen leaders, this is a time not to retire, but to inspire. Your experiences, your values, and your insights are indispensable as we count programs and policies that are inclusive, forward-thinking, and humane. Your presence in the city council and in our communities reflects our belief that governance is enriched by diversity and age and experience. As we celebrate Senior Citizen Month, we look forward to this October being more than ceremonial. We hope it will be truly transformational. Let this be a time when aging is celebrated, when every wrinkle is a budge of wisdom, and every silver hair is a symbol of strength. As Chairman of the Committee on Social Development, which include the senior citizens, I remain your advocate in ensuring that our local policies continue to promote your welfare, champion your rights, and honor your legacy. Let us work together and build a city where aging is a source of pride and where every stage of life is embraced with dignity and purpose. We also request the Committee on Rules to include in today's agenda the resolution acknowledging and confirming the appointment of senior citizens official who will hold their office from October 1 to 31, 2025. Mabuhay po ang sektor kang senior citizen, mabuhay ang satuyang syudad.
Thank you very much, Councilor Valdimoro. Any other privileged speeches? Councilor Aris Makaraig.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
The Senior Citizen Vice Mayor, Mrs. Acabado, and members of this August body, the senior citizen councilors, welcome to this August body, and my fellow members of this Sanggunean. Good morning. I rise on a privilege to emphasize an important measure that this Sanggunean Panglongsood should pass. We are being flooded by applications for building permits, Mr. Chair, of large developments. And we have discussed with the City Engineering Office, we have discussed with the Solid Waste Management Office, and before the City Mayor. And she emphasized that there is an urgency that we pass a rain-water runoff management ordinance. This is triggered by the development now being conducted along Isarog Avenue, Naga City. There is a development in that street, in that area, in the size of around 3,000 to 4,000 square meters. Gigiboon po ining garamol. Imagine along Isarog Avenue. Isarog Avenue is one of the most flooded areas during heavy rains. What can we do about it? In 2016, ladies and gentlemen, the former President Benigno Aquino III, through then DPWH Secretary Singzon, approved the Philippine Green Building Code. This is to supplant the obsolete national building code that we have. Niri require po digdi na ang mga areas na kakaigwaning large developments dapat magkaigwaning rain-water runoff plan. Ano po nung rain-water runoff plan? Ang atop-tapu baga dakulaon ano? And the rainwater coming from that when it rains, sa in po nagduduman? Sa drainage tapo ano? Now, are our drainages ready? Are our small drainages ready for big developments? It's always a no. Because how can we foresee the future kung si Simon po ma-develop dyan? So what is the answer? We need these developments to share in the responsibility of preventing flooding by putting up a rain-water runoff management plan. Magkaigwa po sinaning imbakan sa log mismo kan sa indang developments. Sayang data po ining inabot ka nagpaconstruct ang SNR, ka nagpaconstruct ang landers. We could have taken this opportunity. 2016 pa ang Philippine Green Building Code, and it's 2025 now. Ten years of allowing developments to just run their waters in our drainages. It's not acceptable, it's not green, it's not pro-people. Pag nagba-isa-kaysa ma-reklamo sa gobyerno, we have done nothing, nothing. And by having an ordinance to that effect, we can show the people that this Sanggunean Panglongsood, that this government cares. I submitted a proposed ordinance just this morning because the meeting was just late in the evening yesterday. And I wish to emphasize and I wish to invite my co-members to join in the crafting of this ordinance so that we can show that Naga City does not back out to the challenge of climate change. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Aris Makaraig. We wish to acknowledge the presence of the former president of the Central Beagle State University of Agriculture and now the Administrator of the City College of Naga, Doctor Magno Ponar. Any other privileged speech from the regular members? Councilor Nathan Seryo.
Mr. Chairman, Honorable Bordado and Madam Vice Mayor Acabado, mga pag-iriba sa konseho, regular members, saka ining samoyong mga counterparts, maray na agat habi sa gabos. Maaman ko ta akong plano magtaramig di, kundi sikatain ko nagtaram. Si Kuncel Aris, niya ako mag-arugman daw niya ko ako. Kundi, kuanun ko po ining oportunidad na i-welcome gabos na mga senior citizens, digdi sa City Hall, mga officials. Gusto ko pong sabihin sa indo na pun pakadto, kangan alkaldita si Depondo Yes Rubredo. Perme pong naisipan ka mo, perme ka mong pigigiromdom. Ang senior citizen, perme pigigiromdom kan lokal na gobyerno kan Naga. Kaya nga ni naglakitaning oska. Iyo po. And kuanun ko po ining oportunidad na may pixalang po akunin, katakod kayan na dae kamun na lilingawan, may pixalang po akunin propunidong ordinansa, yaon ngunyan sa new business row item number eight, propose ordinance prohibiting the modification of vehicle mufflers in the city of Naga, providing penalties, incentives for enforcement, and for other purposes. Ini po na iba siguro sa ibang mga initiative ata, ang aram ko, igwang nainut na mga initiative pero kapanpaning device, igwa pang pangsukol kang sound. Aram kong mga senior citizens agaw na anturog ano. Tapos batanga alauna alas 12, may naghaaging motorohanong behikolo na big modifyan tambutso. intirong napapagmatagabos ang inaagihan kaya na mga residensya. Pati ang sendong lingkod, difícil na magbalik sa pagturog ano. Kaya siguro naghuyom si Consular Frank Garo, biktima man siya kaini, senior naman. Pagkasararu ang tapo ini sa mga hinahaduyon ko po kamulaw na si mga senior citizens na magtabang sa pagbilukan niya si mapaaprobranta. Tanghari simplified. Bako sa ng obligasyon kang lokal na gobyerno, pati kan mga tanod ang pagimposar kan ordinansa. Tanghari tuninong kita digdi nanok pagturog. Kundi, pati ang mga sa ordinansan ini, pati na ordinaryong kunyan, pwede kang magkunyan, magdakupkan, ano ni? Violators. Asin, pag may nadakup ka, may incentive ka halii sa lokal na gobyerno. Kung pirang penalty, 50% sa imo. Kaya digdi, garo mayong makaligtas digdi sa mga aruganing mga kuwan. Pati ang mga shops na imbweento sa pagmodify kabali sa ipipanalis. Ipo, so giraray padangat me po. Padangat kan lokal na gobyerno kan Naga, ang mga senior citizen, maray na aga po.
Thank you very much, Councilor Nathan Seryo. I think we have another privileged speech coming from City Councilor Dr. Gail Abunal Gomez.
Good morning to our Presiding Officer, Gilda Gail Senior, my esteemed colleagues from the 15th Sanggunean, to our senior citizen officials, the dedicated members of the Secretariat, our friends from the media, honored guests in the gallery, and to all our online viewers, welcome and thank you for joining us today. When headlines are filled with stories of missing public funds or high-ranking officials getting away with wrongdoing, trust quickly fades. People start questioning not just the government, but even their own communities or leaders. This kind of doubt is heavy, making people suspicious and tired. Corruption scandals do not just damage institutions. They take a toll on spirits too. Many Filipinos feel helpless watching their hard-earned taxes disappear instead of returning to services or support they need. When people in power are not listening or acting fast enough, a lot of Filipinos feel anxious and frustrated. When we see nothing but bad news on social media, it becomes exhausting and discouraging. This helplessness feeds into anxiety and depression. When it seems like nothing ever changes, people start to lose hope for themselves and their families. The latest statistics show that mental health issues in the Philippines are affecting millions of Filipinos with increasing urgency. Estimates indicate that between 7 million to 12.5 million Filipinos suffer from mental health conditions with cases rising about 2% annually. This trend is particularly sharp among the youth aged 15 to 19 years old, reflecting a growing mental health crisis in the country. A survey of Filipino workers reported increases in stress, worry, and sadness, largely driven by financial strain, work pressure, physical health concerns, family issues, and job insecurity. These set of challenges need coordinated, sustained action to protect mental well-being. But what is amazing is that Filipinos often find ways to support each other. Open conversations about mental health are on the rise. Today, we would like everyone to know that we will begin such conversations in our very own workplace, here in our very own LGU. So I propose for inclusion in today's regular session this resolution and joining employees of the City Government of Naga to participate in the Emotional Wellness Month in celebration of the World Mental Health Month, stressing the importance of wellness in the workplace. A workplace that encourages balance, open communication, and mutual support makes a big difference. More so, a workplace that encourages transparency and demands accountability fosters employees' trust in the system, which in turn motivates them to do their best. This sense of accomplishment leads to positive well-being. When we feel valued and cared for, we are happier, more productive, and more creative in what we do. Sometimes, it's as simple as checking in with each other, taking small breaks, or having a supportive conversation. Those little things help us stay motivated and remind us that we are more than just our job descriptions. We are people with lives, dreams, and families. So let us keep these conversations rolling. Let us keep looking out for each other, promote a healthy work culture, and remember that a thriving workplace starts with people who feel good about being here. Thank you and good morning.
Thank you very much, Councilor Dr. Gail Abunal Gomez. Any other privileged speech from the regular members? Yes, Councilor Jude Jokno.
Mister Presiding Officer, sir, distinguished colleagues, and to our senior citizen counterparts, rin aga po sa indogabos. And sa gabos pong yao ngunyan digdi. Good morning po sa indogabos. I rise today on a matter of personal and collective concern. A matter that strikes at the heart of transparency, accountability, and the true spirit of public service. Recently, discussions have been made regarding the Independent Commission for Infrastructure's Transparency and Flood Control Program. While I fully support initiatives that aim to address flooding, a persistent and serious issue in our city, I could not in good conscience lend my approval to a program whose mechanisms of transparency remain vague and insufficiently explained. Transparency is the foundation of good governance. When we talk about public projects, especially those that involve millions, even billions of pesos, and affect the safety of our constituents, the people deserve nothing less than clarity. They deserve to ensure, they deserve to know where every peso goes, how every project is implemented, and who ensures accountability. Without clear guidelines and accessible information, the noble goal of flood control risk being overshadowed by doubts and mismanagement. It is my position that these hearings and investigations pertaining to any and all matters regarding flood control corruption be made public. Hence, I am manifesting my support for the resolution of Councilor Frank Mendoza. A resolution is strongly urging the ICI to adopt a policy of transparency by holding public hearings in its investigation of corruption in public works. It means standing for the right kind of progress, one that is honest, transparent, and accountable to every naganyo. On a brighter note, pero serios po kayang grabe ini, ining satuyang flood control. On a brighter note, I am proud to share that this coming October 26, Barangay Pakul will once again bloom with the revival of the Pakul Flower Festival. And thank you to Mayor Lenny Robredo for approving a small budget for this activity. But it will do the anyway, this event not only honors Pakul rich tradition of flower growing. May just say po na 'yung mga day panakakadyan sa Pakul pag panahoning mga pagburak, mahihilin po hindoo ang mga flower farms kung gurakno kagayun ang satuyang mga flowers digdi sa Naga. And this event not only honors Pakul rich tradition of flower growing, but also brings renewed opportunities for local livelihood tourism and civic pride. I commend the organizers, barangay officials, and all stakeholders for bringing this beautiful festival back to life. This is proof that when we work together, government, private sector, and community, something truly vibrant can flourish. Magayun po ini 'yung flower festival na ini. Lastly, I wish to share a small contribution that reflects my personal commitment to public service. Recently po, I donated a minivan as a service vehicle to the Solid Waste Management Office. This is to support their daily operations and improve efficiency in waste collection and community cleanup initiatives. Ito po 'yang support para duman sa project ang swamo na Information Education Campaign. Ang gusto tapo kaya, ini mga eskwelahan mapasyaraninda, tamiski mga akin pa dapat maintindianininda kung papaano ang pagha-handalning basura, ang importansya po kang segregation. Ta, maybe all of us or some of us may not know na ang satuya pong sira na pigkakakan, 'yung mga nadadakup sa dagat, ugwa na po nung microplastics sa mga karnikang sira. And also, ini po 'yang, ini pong satung air na pigahangos, it was found out na ugwa ng microplastics. Kaya po ugwa kitang mga hilang na kumisad ang mga satuyang ugat sa hawak, itong very tiny veins nagbabara dahil po pala dyan sa tiny microplastic na nahahangusta. So, we would like to introduce the education for maski sa mga akin na po na mag-segregate na kita. Anyway, ugwa man maka po kan satuya mga plastics. Magkakegwa pa kitang ini, kita sa siyudad. This is my way of giving back to help strengthen our city's environment programs and assist the hard-working men and women of the swamo who keeps Naga clean and orderly every day. Palakpakanta po ang mga swamo, mga garbage collectors sa po, at taga grabe sindang magtrabaho. In fact, the vehicle is already in the possession of the swamo office received by no less than Engineer Joel Martin last September 9. So, I would like also to request Honorable Rosales as the Chairman of the Committee of Rules and Privileges to include my resolution requesting Mayor Lenny Robredo to sign and accept the deed of donation in special business matters for immediate disposition. I believe that genuine public service is not measured by position or by title, but by the impact we make in the lives of others. If each of us can contribute in our capacity, whether through leadership, time, or resources, together we can build stronger, cleaner, and more progressive Naga City. Diyos maray na aga po sa indos. Salamat.
Thank you very much, Councilor Jude Jokno. Any other privileged speech from the regular members? My counterpart, Honorable Vice Mayor Cabado, informed me that her colleagues will be delivering privileged speeches during the next regular session. Madam Secretary.
Next is the reading in order of
Councilor Rosales.
My name is your Chairman. May move to dispense with the reading of the Order of Business and Hope for Inclusion of the Item Under Special Business in Order, a request for ratification of a memorandum of agreement entered by the City Government of Naga and Biscas de La Salle University and University of the Philippines National Center for Transportation relative to the development of a sustainable, safe, and inclusive urban transport system in the city of Naga. Another request for ratification by the City Mayor of an extrajudicial settlement of estate with absolute sale executed between the ears of Rosita R. Febres and the City Government of Naga for the acquisition of a portion of land required as road right-of-way for the San Isidro sanitary landfill. Another request for ratification by the City Mayor of a memorandum of agreement entered into by and between the City Government and the University of Neva Caseres relative to the implementation of the idea to start-up project. We also have another request for ratification by the City Mayor of a memorandum of agreement entered into by and between the City Government and Gawad Kalinga Community Development Foundation relative to the donation and construction of 30 housing units on a parcel of land owned by the city located at Situsalonggigi, Kararayan, Naga City. Not yet requesting for ratification by the Sanggunean of a memorandum of agreement entered into by and between the City Government and Safe Travel PH Mobility Innovations Organization Incorporated relative to the development, pilot testing, and validation of the Parasol platform. Another request for a request for authority from the City Mayor to enter, negotiate, and sign a memorandum of understanding with Pecol Medical Center in relation to receiving, managing, and returning of referred cases from lower-level facilities within the healthcare provider network. Another letter from the City Mayor requesting for the passage of a resolution authorizing her to enter and sign and negotiate for the memorandum of understanding with the Department of Health, Pecol Center for Health Development, and Philippine Health Insurance Corporation Regional Office in relation to local health system integration. Also under SBO is a letter from the City Treasurer approved by the City Mayor requesting for the passage of a informing and confirming the Development Bank of the Philippines Naga Landing Center Pangangibang Drive officialist of the newly elected officials of the City Government of Naga. Another letter from the City Mayor requesting for the passage of Resolution 1 to the Pecol Regional Development Council's Resolution Number 3-61, Series of 2025, urgently requesting the Department of Budget and Management for the reinstatement of the proposed 1.2 billion peso budget allocation for the new Naga Air Development Project. A proposed resolution from the Honorable Francisco Mendoza and Wilfredo Jude E. Jokno, the Honorable Wilfredo Jude E. Jokno, strongly urging the Independent Commission for Infrastructure to adopt a policy of transparency by holding public proceedings in its investigation of corruption in public works. A proposed resolution from the Honorable Gilda Gail Abunal Gomez and joining employees of the City Government of Naga to participate in the Emotional Wellness Month in celebration of the World Mental Health Month, stressing the importance of wellness in the workplace. A proposed resolution from the Honorable A proposed resolution from the Honorable Jefferson Romeo B. Felix congratulating and commending Francesco Gabriel Capasiety of Saint Joseph's School and a resident of Barangay del Rosario for winning gold medal in the 2025 Philippine International Mathematical Olympiad held in Cebu City. Another proposed resolution from the Honorable Gilda Gail Abonal Gomez congratulating and commending John Carlo Peñas of Ateneo de Naga University for ranking ninth in the April 2025 Civil Engineers Licenseure Examination held last April 28 and 29, 2025. Another proposed resolution from the Honorable Gilda Gail Abonal Gomez congratulating and commending Nicole Therese Sumalabi of Ateneo de Naga University for ranking seventh in the September 2025 Psychometrician's Licenseure Examination. Another proposed resolution from the Honorable Francisco Mendoza granting the City Mayor continuing authority to enter into a memorandum of agreement with senior high schools and with tertiary learning institutions for their internships on the jobs and practicum programs. Another proposed resolution from the Honorable Jefferson Romeo Felix urging strict adherence to the General Appropriations Act, DPWH Department Order Number 23, and DBM National Budget Circular Number 595 directing the DPWH Regional Office to undertake corrective action on the diversion of funds intended for the construction of the SK Federation Office in Barangay Balatas and calling on the Commission on Audit to conduct an audit review for possible notice of disallowance and restitution of funds. And last, under Special Business and Order is the proposed resolution of the Honorable Wilfredo Jude Jocno co-sponsored by the Honorable Alan Reese Macraig authorizing the City Mayor to accept and sign the deed of donation for and in behalf of the City Government administered by the Donor Match Tig Logistics Philippines represented by Yolanda M. Abastillas as president for the acceptance of one-unit motor vehicle for the exclusive use of the Solid Waste Management Office in the conduct of its information education campaign and other relative activities in line with the city's waste management programs. Under unfinished business, Mr. Chairman, are reports from the Committee on Information Technology, People Empowerment and Good Governance, Public Utilities, Land Use, the Committees on Disaster Risk and Resiliency, Environment and Energy Laws and Ordinances, and Peace and Order and Public Safety, a joint committee report, the Committee on Public Utilities, the Committees on Land Use, the Joint Committee Hearing on Women and Gender Development and Children, the Committee on Culture and Arts, the Committee on Laws and Ordinances, the proposed ordinance of the Honorable Jefferson Romeo Felix institutionalizing the Katipuna ng Kabataan Standardization Framework in Naga City, establishing city-aligned guidelines, contextualized modalities, and support mechanisms for the conduct of KK assemblies, youth profiling, and participatory consultations in every barangay toward a transparent, inclusive, and data-informed youth governance system. The proposed ordinance also of the Honorable Jefferson Romeo Felix establishing the Barangay Youth Development Council in Naga City as the grassroots counterpart of the Naga City Council for Youth Development, defining its structure, composition, functions, and cooperative relationship with the Sangguniyang Kabataan. The proposed ordinance sponsored by the Honorable Gilda Gail Abonal Gomez, co-sponsored by the Honorels Baldimoro Felix, City Youth Counselors Morata, Rances, and Constantino, and Acting Parental Responsibility providing guidelines for children's well-being, penalties for prohibited acts, and establishing comprehensive programs on positive parenting, child protection, and community education. The response letter from the City Peso Manager Rodric Di Recorso regarding the implementation of the Special Program for Employment of Students and the Summer Employment for Enrollment Program. And last, under unfinished business is the proposed ordinance of the Honorable Melvin Ramon Buenafe authorizing qualified barangay teenagers to augment the Public Safety Office as traffic enforcers providing for their minimum qualifications, training, and city deputization authority in the enforcement of certain laws and city ordinances. Under new business, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution from the Naga City People's Council urging the Sangguniyang Pang lungsod of Naga to conduct an investigation in aid of legislation on the implementation of infrastructure projects in the city of Naga. The proposed ordinance of the Honorable Alan Reese Macraig, the Rain-Water Run-off Mitigation Ordinance, a request for the passage of an ordinance from the City Mayor reverting to unappropriated balance the amount of 923,000 pesos out of the savings for the months of August and September from select personal services accounts and appropriating the same to the City College of Naga's Other General Services Account. Also, a request from the City Mayor for the passage of an ordinance authorizing the charging against the current appropriation of the City Assistant's Office, the total amount of 2,000 pesos, 2,067 pesos and 87 centavos to settle the discrepancy in the salaries received by Mr. Mariano Anyonuevo corresponding to the monthly contributions to GSIS and Field Health. Another request from the City Mayor for the passage of an ordinance authorizing the charging against the current appropriation of certain departments and offices, the total amount of 489,844 and 84 centavos to cover payment of prior year's obligation to various suppliers as in the letter. And under other matters, Mr. Chairman, are three issuances from the Philippine Counselors League pertaining to the capacity development trainings, the continuing legal legislative education program, and the attendance to the capacity development trainings organized by the Philippine Counselors League.
Counselor Rosales, how about the new business items entered in this list? We were provided with the agenda for today.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
But it appears that you did not mention any of the new business items listed in this agenda.
These are just inclusions, Mr. Chairman. So, the items which are already.
So, in other words, you did not.
I did not.
Read the actual items under the new business.
Under the, only the inclusions, Mr. Chairman.
That was quiet, startling. Why did you first mention the inclusions? You should have mentioned the.
I asked, Mr. Chairman, earlier before moving for the inclusion of the items as discussed. I already moved to dispense with the reading of the agenda.
I did not hear your motion then, but I was expecting that you would be reading these items because I was a bit confused. You were reading virtually a different set of.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Of items.
Only the inclusions.
But anyway, Counselor Baldimoro was saying that we should come up with an official resolution recognizing the presence here of our counterparts.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Counselor Baldimoro, can you include that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, may I request to include under Special Business or Order? I believe it is under item number 25, the resolution acknowledging and confirming the appointment of senior citizens official who will hold their office from October 1 to 31, 2025.
Okay, so that will be item number one under Special Business or Order.
If the Chairman of the.
Chairman of the Committee on Rules?
Allow, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor Baldimoro.
With the indulgence of the Committee on Rules, on rules, Mr. Chair, all the items for ratification must be included under unfinished business, not in the Special Business.
Items on?
Items for ratification, Mr. Chair, there were five items for ratification.
Items for ratification?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
They should be included under unfinished business?
Not in the Special Business or Order.
What is the reaction of the Chairman of the Committee on Rules?
Mr. Chairman, if the Honorable Baldimoro deems it necessary, but on my opinion, Mr. Chairman, we already issued the authority for the City Mayor to sign the said memorandum of understanding or memorandum agreements. So, there might no longer be need to further elaborate on the request for ratification by the City Mayor.
So, given your pronouncement that we had already given the City Mayor the go signal, so those items should belong to the unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So, you now agree with Counselor Baldimoro that such items should belong to the unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Baldimoro, can you come up with the necessary?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Chair, may I move that item number 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 under Special Business or Order, this pertaining matters on ratification, be transferred to unfinished business.
Any second? Yes, Counselor Reese?
With all due respect, Mr. Chair, I would like to object. Under the law, the word ratification will refer to those acts which are without authority and number two, which went beyond the authority of the person given the authority, Mr. Chair. So, this body gave the authority to the City Mayor. The question is, did the City Mayor went beyond, go beyond the authority given, or did she act without authority? As mentioned by the Chairman of the Committee on the Rule of Rules, the City Mayor acted with authority. And unless we can show that the City Mayor acted beyond that authority, Mr. Chair, there's no need to ratify, Mr. Chair. We call those contracts voidable if they are subject to ratification. But, garukita ping pong, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I remember, Counselor Reese, that we discussed this matter, I think during the last session, regarding ratification. Can you?
We.
Yes, Counselor Mendoza.
Mr. Chair, ratification has been a practice observed by the Sangguniyan ever since. In fact, during the time of Counselor Judge Abonal, very strict requirement. For now, we are still observing that practice, notwithstanding the fact that previously authorized agreements need no ratification. Ratification is only intended to cure defective authorization or the absence of authorization as mentioned by Counselor Reese. But for now, I think with your respect to Counselor Reese, we can still observe the practice until such time that this body adopt a new rule wherein previously authorized agreements need no longer be ratified. But as of now, we have not established that rule, so we observe the practice.
Okay, so we thank Counselor Reese and Counselor Mendoza for coming up with such pronouncements. And in the meantime, we will be including the items under unfinished business. Madam Secretary.
General Order of Business, the first item is the resolution of the Honorable Elmer Baldimoro acknowledging and confirming the appointment of the 2025 Senior Citizens Officials.
Counselor Elmer Baldimoro.
Mr. Chair, may I move for passage of a resolution acknowledging and confirming the appointment of senior citizens official who will hold their office from October 1 to 31, 2025. I saw move, Mr. Chair.
Joint and collective?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
The next item is a letter dated October 3 of the City Mayor requesting for a passage of a resolution authorizing her to enter into negotiate and sign a memorandum agreement with the Philippine Dental Association Camarinesur and Naga's Chapter relative to the provision of free dental services on the first 1,000 days of life, starting from pregnancy throughout the first two years of a child's life.
Counselor Albios, I would have referred this to the famous Chairman of the Committee on Health, Dr. Boots Borhab, but Counselor Albios responded immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This proposed memorandum of agreement between the City Government of Naga and the Philippine Dental Association Camarinesur Chapter aims to provide free dental services on the first 1,000 days of life from inception to the first two years of a child's life. So, may I move that we authorize the City Mayor to enter into and negotiate and sign the memorandum agreement with the Philippine Dental Association Camarinesur Chapter.
Any second?
Any.
Any objection? Comment, Counselor Nathan?
No objection, no comment, Mr. Chair. I just would like to inform the body that my counterpart senior citizen counselor, the Honorable Lili Bell Larare, is now seated beside me.
We.
Please acknowledge.
We recognize the presence of the counterpart of Counselor Nathan Serio. Counselor Madame Lili Bell Larare. Thank you for attending the session. Yes, Counselor Mendoza.
May I move, Mr. Chair, that we amend the previous motion specifically stating that that MOA would be effective upon its execution without need of ratification.
Yes, Counselor Albios.
Amend as proposed by the Honorable Mendoza.
So, any other comment? Counselor Baldimoro.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is beneficial to children. However, Mr. Chair, just want to amend the memorandum of agreement stating that to remove the first 1,000 days, first 1,000 days of children, Mr. Chair, started from the womb. So, it would need no dental services. Unless otherwise, the services to the mother.
Okay, reaction also from Counselor Gail Abonal Gomez?
Mr. Chair, this is a health concern, but this program has long been lodged at the City Population and Nutrition Office. There has been previous MOAs before, and when we say their first 1,000 days of life, it's actually pertaining to the condition of the mother. The reason behind the amendment of this MOA, Mr. Chair, is that it's adding additional services. now not only for teen moms, but also for the fathers.
So you're contradicting the comment of Councillor Baldimoro regarding the 1,000 days?
Not contradicting, Mr. Chair, but just clarifying on that term, first 1,000 days. Perhaps you can do something about the phrasing of that, of the particular, of the content, so that it can be, it will be clearer that when you say first 1,000 days.
So what is your suggestion?
First 1,000 days of life. Wait, Mr. Chair.
I think something is wrong with the phrasing.
This was already pointed out, Mr. Chair. However, when the MOA was presented again to the CPNO before it was even presented to the Mayor's Office, it still included the same phrase. Okay, so it says here, Mr. Chair, to provide dental care to pregnant mothers throughout their pregnancy and up to two years after the birth of their baby in consonance with the first 1,000 days law. So perhaps we can, in the letter, we can just say in relation to the provision of free dental services to pregnant mothers throughout their pregnancy and up to two years after the birth of the baby in consonance with the first 1,000 days law. But in the MOA, Mr. Chair, it's clear here that the first 1,000 days refers not to the, not to the child, but to the mother, Mr. Chair.
So it's clearly stated in the memorandum of agreement? There was just a confusion in the letter?
In the cover letter, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And Councillor Albios, you are agreeable to the amendment made by Councillor Mendoza?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So kindly make the final motion now.
So, Mr. Chair, may I move that we authorize the City Mayor to enter into negotiate and sign a memorandum agreement between the LGNAGA and the Philippine Dental Association Camarinesur chapter relative to the provision of the first 1,000 days law on, starting from pregnancy throughout the first two years of a child's life, with the provision that there's no need for ratification of such MOA, Mr. Chairman. So move.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Let me remind the counterparts, senior citizens, that you can participate in the discussion. Next item, please.
The next item is a letter dated October 3 of the City Mayor requesting for a passage of a resolution authorizing her to enter into negotiate and sign a memorandum agreement with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources Regional Office relative to the establishment of city-urban biodiversity program.
Councillor Albios, you have any reaction?
Mr. Chair.
Councillor Ariz Magarayig, biodiversity.
Biodiversity refers to the different, shall we say, creatures in our environment, including us, that needs to be protected and to be given opportunity to thrive. This memorandum of agreement with the DNR is necessary, Mr. Chair. It serves a lot of purposes for the environment and I move that the City Mayor be given authority to enter into negotiate and sign a memorandum of agreement with the DNR in relation to the establishment of the city-urban biodiversity program without need of ratification upon execution of the agreement, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
The next item is another letter dated October 3 from the City Mayor requesting for a passage of a resolution ratifying the memorandum agreement on Yusuprak entered into by and between the City Government of Naga and Gawad Kalinga Community Development Foundation Incorporated.
Yusuprak, Councillor Albios?
Sanggunan Palungsood approved a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement on Yusuprak with the Gawad Kalinga Community Development Foundation Incorporated for a housing project at a 1,452 square meters property in Sitcho Salonggi in Barangay Kararayan, Mr. Chairman. So with this, may I move that we ratify the memorandum of agreement on Yusuprak entered into between the City Government of Naga and the Gawad Kalinga Community Development Foundation Incorporated. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
Next is another letter dated October 3 from the City Mayor requesting for a passage of a resolution authorizing her to enter into negotiate and sign a memorandum agreement with Naga College Foundation relative to the updating of business plans of the local economic enterprises called Central Station Naga City, General Hospital, and Market Enterprise and Promotion Office.
Reaction from the members and from the senior citizens?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councillor Mendoza?
Just a query. I read the MOA. Oli is not included among the list. Oli is also a local economic enterprise. May we know the reason why it was not included? Our Lady of Lord's Infirmary.
Our Lady of Lord's Infirmary.
Mr. Chair, maybe we can ask a representative from the Mayor's Office to clarify the matter.
Do we have a representative here coming from the Mayor's Office? Councillor Baldimoro?
Mr. Chair, could we just refer this matter to the Committee on Ways and Means?
Committee on?
Ways and Means.
Ways and Means?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so there is, kindly make the motion?
May I move, Mr. Chair, to refer this matter to the Committee on Ways and Means?
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Next item.
The next item is another letter dated October 3 from the City Mayor requesting for a passage of a resolution authorizing her to enter into negotiate and sign a contract of affiliation with Kabalkinto Birthing Center relative to the affiliation of Midwifery students of the City College of Naga.
Again, we wish to acknowledge the presence of the Administrator of the City College of Naga, Dr. Magno Konag. Can you make some comments on this particular proposal? In the meantime, we will...
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and to the members of the...
Good morning.
We are entering into contract with this birthing clinic as required. Otherwise, the DOH would not recognize our courses, particularly on the affiliation. As one of the requirements, we need to have an agreement with a birthing clinic which the CHED is also requiring, particularly the PRC. Because as they finish, we are going to submit the documents for their particular taking of the board. About the...
Any comment or reaction from the members of the council and from counterparts? Councillor Nathan Serio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sin tabi ang lokasyon kung ang Kabalkinto Birthing Center.
I am not very particular on the location. However, we had the agreement with them for ratification for purposes of compliance of the requirements. I think we have already placed there already in the agreement.
San Gabriel Pamplona?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chair, iyan bang Kabalkinto Birthing Center ay recommended kang DOH? Ay kang...
Actually, it is a recognized one.
Recognized one. Iguan kita sa Naga na pwedeng lauganta. Medyo ang mga estudyantita mapadumang pala sa Pamplona para magsirbi dumaan.
Wala po yun tayo at sa Naga. Kung di nandun lang sa Pamplona, ang sa ilang kili.
Why did we choose that particular birthing center?
We usually distribute our students to different birthing clinics. If the other clinics are already filled with our students and also with the Naga College and other schools, we choose even outside the Naga facility. So that we could also, we could also distribute the students equally to other clinics. For example, in the city of Naga, we only have very few. But since they are also filled with the students from different schools, so we look for others, other clinics where we could be accommodated.
As you stated earlier, this institution is duly accredited?
Yes, with the DOH. We are not allowed to fill our students with the clinics without that accreditation.
Any other comment? Yes, Councillor Ariz?
Do you, as the Administrator, recommend entering into contract with the Kabalkinto Birthing Clinic, Mr. Chair? Do you recommend?
Yes, of course.
We did not see any recommendation coming from the City College of Naga. This letter, this memorandum was endorsed by your office, sir, to the City Mayor's Office?
Yes.
With the cover letter?
Yes, we have.
Recommending the signing of this agreement?
Yes, sir.
That would be all, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other comment? Councillor Mendoza?
Given the manifestation of the president of CCN, I move that we authorize the City Mayor to enter into MOA with Kabalkinto Birthing Center in relation to the affiliation of midwifery students of CCN. With the same additional manifestation that the MOA would be effective upon execution without need of ratification, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you very much, Dr. Konag. The rules are back in force.
The next is another letter from the City Mayor with the same request for him to enter into negotiate and sign a contract of affiliation with Saint Margaret of Anchok Birthing Home, Kalabanga Camarinesur, relative to the affiliation of midwifery students of City College of Naga.
Yes, Councillor Mendoza?
Mr. Chair, this matter of affiliation is a standard practice among medical schools, midwifery schools. So I would propose that we give continuing authority to the City Mayor to enter into MOA with birthing facilities subject to the following condition. Number one, that those birthing facilities located in Naga City be prioritized in order to minimize the cost to the students. Number two, that the agreement should be in accordance with the rules and guidelines issued by CHED. And number three, that the same shall be effective upon execution without need of ratification. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Councillor Baldimoro?
Mr. Chair, Councillor Mendoza has a proposed resolution.
Conditions?
No, Mr. Chair. There is a proposed resolution by the Honorable Mendoza granting continuing authority to the City Mayor. My apprehension, Mr. Chair, as manifested by Doc Magno Konag, that the DOH requires a particular memorandum agreement and, of course, a resolution authorizing the City Mayor. Umagakaiguaning continuing authority ang satoyang alcalde. Ina magakaiguaning each and individual authority, resolution of authority granting, ito pong mga nagre-request for authority. That's my apprehension, Mr. Chair. But for the issuance of resolution to this Saint Margaret of Antioch Birthing, I supported a proposed measure, Mr. Chair.
So there is no actual objection? You just have an apprehension?
Reservation, Mr. Chair.
The motion is approved.
May I clarify, Mr. Chair? If this will be on that particular item on all the matters that the City Mayor is requesting for an authority?
Councillor Mendoza?
Mr. Chair, the proposed resolution covers only those related to work immersion program, student internship program, clinical practicum, as well as affiliation. And the resolution clearly states that it should be subject to the rules and regulations of the Department of Education insofar as with or work immersion program is concerned and to the rules and regulations of CHED insofar as clinical practicum, OJT, student internship program are concerned. So, the resolution further states... But that is not yet in the agenda, I think, Mr. Chair. And I'm just explaining.
Okay, so clearing up, Councillor Baldimoro? Okay, thank you. So that motion has been approved. Next item, please.
Next is another authority requested by the City Mayor for their affiliation with BMC. Same request, Mr. Chair.
Again, Councillor Mendoza?
Mr. Chair, with the indulgence of the Committee on Rules, would it be possible if we treat the previous resolution, the proposed resolution, giving continuing authority para lang simbagantana nining surunod-sunod na request for authority?
What do you mean?
Can we... Can we advance the consideration of the proposed resolution giving continuing authority to the City Mayor?
So we will have to go back to the previous resolutions approved by this body?
The previous resolutions duly approved stay. But succeeding request, if we approve this proposed resolution, continuing authority, succeeding request would be covered by this resolution.
Okay. So can you make the final motion now?
We will discuss first.
Yes, Councillor Baldimoro?
Mr. Chair, the request of Councillor Mendoza is to take up first his proposed resolution, not to act on any matter.
What is your proposed resolution, Councillor Mendoza?
I'll take it into a motion, Mr. Chair. I move that we move consideration of this proposed resolution to the current agenda so that we can... Because this would address successive request for authorization by the City Mayor. A resolution granting the City Mayor continuing authority to enter into MOA with senior high schools and with tertiary learning institute. and with tertiary learning institutions for their internship on the job and practicum programs.
Okay, so you are moving that this should be under SBO?
It's actually under SBO, but we are just advancing the consideration.
Okay. A reaction from the chairman of the Committee on Rules? Okay, so kindly make the motion now.
Uh, with that, can we show the this positive portion?
Reaction from Councilor Gail Abunal Gomez?
Chair, I thought that we're already discussing the matter. I'm about to say something regarding the proposed resolution. But if the proponent would like to go over the proposed resolution first and I will mention my comment later on, Mr. Chair.
Do you agree, Councilor Mendoza?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed, Councilor Gail Abunal Gomez.
Um, Mr. Chair, in the proposed resolution, I think this only pertains to students going to the LGU to do their internship. Um, the previous requests for, um, authority to enter into AMOA, including ratification, Mr. Chair, also includes students from the CCN going to other areas for internship. Perhaps the author could include a separate provision which will cover that even our students...
Can you come up now with the provision?
Um, to include, um... Perhaps, Mr. Chair, want to... In the one, one, two, three, four... Five, on the fifth, whereas...
Number five?
Accepting student interns, accepting and sending student interns. Not sure, Mr. Chair, if that will cover the suggestion. Perhaps the proponent might want to take a look at the other, um, where assess. The point, Mr. Chair, is that, um, we include we include our own students from the CCN going into the other areas for internship. The resolution, I think, is just focused on us receiving interns and accommodating them in our own...
Thank you, Councilor Mendoza?
I thank the Councilor Gail. Uh, that's true. Iyan pong resolution, iyan pareho ma sa mga lausatuya. They covered si ipapatarata sa iba. Uh, I accept the amendment, Mr. Chair. We can just have the exact words prepared, the committee on style, and we will assist. With that, Mr. Chair, I move that we pass a resolution giving continuing authority to the city mayor to enter into AMOA with the DEP Ed and with the DEP Ed schools and with tertiary institutions in relation to their internship programs, subject to the provisions of the proposed resolution. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second?
As amended, Mr. Chair.
As amended.
As amended, yes, including the amendment. Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Yes, Councilor Valdemoro?
Mr. Chair, may I seek reconsideration to the disposition of the previous item?
Item number?
Item number six, seven, and eight pertaining to the authority given to the birthing facilities.
Six, seven, and eight?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Kano ko lang ang opportunity, Mr. Chair, y'ans ang satoyang a CCN administrator. May we know, since na ilin mga birthing center located outside...
May we request the presence here of the administrator of the City College of Naga, Dr. Magno Konag, and the rules are again suspended?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, mahaput ko lang kay Doc Magno. May binabayaran ba ang estudyante once they were having an affiliation for midwifery? Sample for Kabalkinto Birthing Center and Saint Margaret of Antioch?
Igwa po. Kaya lang kinukwata 'yan sa regular budgeta. Supposed to be that money comes from the RLE. I would like to recall the past payments. RLE is Related Learning Experience and also a clinical practicum. That means the students were paying. Actually, half of the income of the City College of Naga refers to the RLE, which was not collected because of the declaration of former mayor that was sometimes in October or July 19, 2019. Kaya hindi na po nakulikta yun. Yun sana ang pera na ibabayad sa lahat ng mga clinics where we are fielding our students. For the past years, wala kita ng kolekta. That's amounting as of this moment, amounting to 32 million pesos na din na dekulekta. Kaya nagcharge tayo sa regular budget.
Councilor Valdemoro?
May we know the reason, Mr. Chair, kung paano dey kita nakapagkolekta?
In the first place, it was only the declaration of the mayor. I thought all the while after his declaration, there should be an ordinance referring to that, but there was none. But from that time on, no collection whatsoever, even a single centavo. That's why our supposed to be income, including the UNIFAS subsidy, with that RLE should have been more or less 14 million. But what we get only is 5 million from the UNIFAS. The other amount was not paid.
Mr. Chair, so meaning there is a need for an ordinance for us to collect?
I need, I think we have, because even as of this moment, we are suffering from the payment of our part-time teachers. In fact, our budget was depleted. And then I think there was also requested the mayor about 900,000 because our budget is supposed to be ending until December and supposed to be, there should be a continuing fund for the teachers, particularly on the second semester. Because it starts with July, October, it ends in March. We don't have that much money.
In other words, we have a lot of problems there at the City College of Naga?
So many, your chairman.
And who is or who was responsible for such problems?
I would say that the past administration was the one in charge of that. Because even in our supervision, administration supervision of the college, we're interfered by no other people, not members of the Board of Trustees, even to designate an OIC, as OIC of the City College of Naga. It was announced on June 2, an OIC, which I myself, I was not only, but there was an OIC appointed. I'm sorry if it is off tangent of our situations.
I was, or I am actually, the author of the ordinance creating the City College of Naga?
Yes, I remember that. It is already stated there. However, for me, if only the administration supervision of the City College of Naga is not interfered by any, by non-member of the board, the City College of Naga should have been in the upper bracket of performance.
Okay, so, Councilor Valdemoro?
Mr. Chair, first, if there is a need of ordinance, may I request to the administrator of the City College of Naga to write or request to the sanggunan for such an ordinance? Pwede ba 'yan?
Yes.
And another, Mr. Chair, back to the main...
In the meantime, does resolution number six, seven...
Six, seven, and eight, Mr. Chair. So, except for the vehicle, including the vehicle medical center, Mr. Chair, nagbabayad pa po ba kita?
Yes, any, that is equivalent to our students' number. Per hour is 40 pesos.
So i-clear talang, Mr. Chair, that since dey kita nakakapagkolek, for that particular piece or payment, the city government of Naga assume the payment for the affiliation of our midwifery students?
Yes, but we got it from our regular budget.
Yes. Kaya na depleted... Whether it is from, kung anong source...
Point of order, Councilor Valdemoro? We have approved three resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And you were...
Asking for a reconsideration?
Questioning something about the finances?
No, Mr. Chair, I am, uh, I just requested for the reconsideration of the disposition for the three particular matter. Kaya niya pagulay ang tanguyan.
Okay, proceed.
My point is, uh, kung may binabayaran kita, why we are choosing birthing facility outside Naga? Baka igwa man bigdi sa Naga. Kung nagbabayad kita, bigdi na lang makinabang ito mga birthing facility located in Naga City. And why not dey kita magaffiliate to our own Naga City General Hospital? Since nagbabayad man kita, Mr. Chair? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, reaction from the administrator?
That's right. We have been doing that, Mr. Chair. The only problem is that more of our schools, even from Nabua, even from other schools here in Naga City, they are also affiliating with the same hospital, sa BMC. So kung napanuuna ang sakanin, asindang slots, we cannot anymore enter. If only we are given the priority, that is alright, but we cannot do that. So instead of getting into those hospitals, we look for others, other birthing clinics at least nearer to the city. Sipokot and the others are just nearer, rather than going to Goa.
Okay, so the administrator has made the clarification, Councilor Valdemoro, but the resolutions have been approved. So we will not do anything about it. We will just come up with the necessary ordinance. Yes, Councilor Mendoza?
Uh, the authorities already include that birthing centers in Naga City be prioritized. So y'ans na po 'yan dumasa resolution na approving the previous items. I just took a query. Ito pong RLE na pigway, baka may ordinance na to? Wala itong ordinance. It was only a clear declaration in public by the former mayor. My question is, itong thing binabayaran dati kang estudyante, igwa ng ordinance, kaya lang pigway? Actually, it was covered already by the requirements. But in the requirements of the CHED, when the UNIFAS was given, no more. My query, Mr. Chair, is kung igwa ng ordinance, itong pagsingil kang RLE? Wala po. Ah, mayo. So with that, I agree with Councilor Elmer that we pass an ordinance on that matter, Mr. Chair.
Yes, so we need the ordinance.
For clarification, Mr. Chair? The RLE supposed to be included in the subsidy of the UNIFAS or CHED. But in the time that there was already a subsidy requirement for us, only the tuition fees, other fees, which should be considered as fiduciary funds. That, those subsidy only included those requirements such as tuition fees, except RLE or their CP. RLE is Related Learning Experience, as we call in the nursing, and CP for the midwifery. From the beginning, wala po 'yang, dey po 'yang kabali dumansah subsidy kang CHED. Kaya ang estudyante 'yan nagbabayad kaya.
So in other words, we will have to come up with that ordinance? Councilor Albius, reaction?
Hello. Two budget hearings ago, perming nagiging point of discussion ang pagsasabi ni Dr. Konag na dapat si nakukuha ninda sa RLE, dapat magreflect as income kang CCN na pigko-kolek ninda sa ESO. However, sabi kang ESO, may makaming appropriation for RLE. That's why ka naghapot po siya sa kuya. Sabi ko sa iya, in the absence of an ordinance waiving such fee, dapat nagko-kolek ang CCN. Kumbaga voluntary on your part na dey ka man nagkolekta because as you mentioned, there was a previous declaration. Pero kwanan na, dahil may money legal basis si pag-declare may ordinance, dey dapat pig-stop sa pagkolek. Kaya nga na sabi ko, Mr. Chairman, na dapat by next semester icontinue si pagkolek dahil iyo man talaga si babayadan ka mga students ang RLE. Ang may subsidy lang itong UNIFAS.
We cannot go against the mayor's declaration that time. Kaya nag-gusto mo man magkolekta, alaga ng mga estudyante habog magbayad, relying on what the mayor said. Kaya nahirapan kami.
Oh, Councilor Borja, let him speak.
May we know how much ang pinokolek po sa RLE? How much po ang pinokolek sa RLE?
How much though?
I cannot recall, but it would be dependent on the year level, year level. But generally, I say it's more than 6,000 per student.
6,000 per student?
Yes.
It's quite high.
Yes, that's why I said, Mr. Chair, we lost 6 million per semester because of that declaration, which personally I objected on that.
So you are categorically stating that the previous administration came up with a declaration?
Yes, it was in public during the general assembly of all students and faculty, with the parents, just here.
What was the declaration?
Here it is. I can still memorize. "As long as I am the mayor, the RLE shall be shouldered by the city." That's it.
Okay. Reaction, Councilor Rosales?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. We are already dwelling into an issue which is outside our order of business. So I believe this matter could be best tackled in a separate proceeding.
I agree, but the rules are suspended. Uh, I was just stunned by what the administrator of the City College of Naga asserted a while ago. I was asking categorically who was responsible for that particular gaffe?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Anyway, the rules are again enforced.
Mr. Chairman, move for recess?
Okay.
Session resumed. Madam Secretary.
Item number, ano? Number 7 pakita po.
Councilor Frank Mendoza, I think you were proposing the crafting of an ordinance in relation to what Dr. Conag said a while ago.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I will submit the draft ordinance next session.
Okay, thank you. Next item please.
Uh, sir, there is no specific motion for Saint Margaret of Antioch and the BMC Medical Center in connection with the affiliation of Midwifery.
I think that was already moved by Councilor Baldimoro. Okay, Councilor Albios, can you come up with another motion to clarify things once and for all?
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Previously, we approved the request of the city mayor for a resolution authorizing her to enter into, negotiate and sign with Cavalkinto Birthing Center. And so, on item number 6, may I move that we pass the same resolution to enter into negotiate and sign a contract with Saint Margaret of Antioch Birthing Home in Calabanga without need for further ratification from this chamber, Mr. Chairman. So move.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Next item.
Next is the, uh, the letter dated October 6 from the city mayor, requesting to, uh, requesting for passage of a resolution authorizing her to enter into negotiate and sign the memorandum of understanding with the Department of Health, Vehicle Center for Health Development and Philippine Health Insurance Corporation in relation to local health system integration.
Any reaction from the chairman of the Committee on Health? Councilor Dr. Vito Borja?
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, we have to, uh, pass and approve a resolution as suggested by the Honorable Mayor.
Second.
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Next item please.
Next item is a letter from the city mayor requesting... Uh, next please, next thing please. Uh, memorandum of understanding, uh, with the City Vehicle Medical Center in relation to receiving, managing and returning over repaired cases from lower-level facilities within the healthcare provider network.
Again, Councilor Borja?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, these requests by the honorable mayor are for those patients coming from the primary lower-level hospitals who are returned back to their institution, their hospital after proper, after proper management. So, I think, uh, MOU must be signed between the management of Vehicle Medical Center and the city government.
So kindly make the necessary motion.
I move for the passage of a resolution. Resolution authorizing the city mayor to negotiate, uh, and sign, and sign memorandum, MOU, memorandum of agreement with Vehicle Medical Center.
Second.
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Next item please.
Next item is a letter dated October 6 from the city mayor requesting the Sangguniang Panlunsod informing and confirming the Development Bank of the Philippines, Naga Landing Center, uh, of the official list of the newly-elected officials of the city of Naga.
Councilor Rosales?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there is an attached draft resolution from the Development Bank of the Philippines. Can we just request the secretariat to fill in the blanks? Uh, and the same be passed by the Sangguniang Panlunsod for information of the Development Bank of the Philippines. I so move, Mr. Chairman, for the passage.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Next is another letter dated October 6 from the city mayor asking the Sangguniang Panlunsod approval to pass a resolution for suwan to the Vehicle Regional Development Council, Resolution Number 361, urgently requesting the Department of Budget and Management for the reinstatement of the proposed 1.2 billion peso budget allocation for the new Naga Air Development Project.
Any reaction? Councilor Mendoza?
Uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, may I move that we pass a resolution addressed to the Department of Budget and Management seeking the reinstatement of the proposed 1.2 billion peso budget for the Naga, new Naga Air Development Project. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second?
Join and collective.
Join and collective motion. Next item please.
Next item is the proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Jepson Romeo Felix congratulating and commending Francisco...
Gabriel Capacete.
It's not an ordinance, it's a resolution. Proposed resolution.
Yes po. Proposed resolution authored by Honorable Jepson Romeo Felix congratulating and commending Francisco Gabriel Capacete of Saint Joseph School and Arasenatom Naga City for winning a gold medal in the 2025 Philippine International Mathematical Olympiad final round held in Cebu City.
Councilor Jepson Felix.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, this individual, Mr. Chair, named Francesco Gabriel Capacete is a resident of Barangay del Rosario, Naga City, and a student of Saint Joseph School. And he recently participated in the Philippine International Mathematical Olympiad, or Fimo, uh, which is one of the country's most, among one of the country's most prestigious competitions. And with this, Mr. Chair, um, I move that we pass a resolution congratulating and commending Francesco Gabriel Capacete of Saint Joseph School, Naga City, and the resident of Barangay del Rosario for winning a gold medal in the 2025 Philippine International Mathematical Olympiad.
Join and collective.
Join and collective, Mr. Chair.
Next item please.
Next item is a resolution strongly urging the Independent Commission for Infrastructure to adopt a policy of transparency by holding public proceedings in its investigation of corruption in public work, high, high, public works authored by the Honorable Francisco Mendoza and Honorable Wilfredo Jude Jocno.
Councilor Mendoza?
The, that is the subject matter of the privileged speech of the Honorable Jude A. Jocno, essentially requesting the Independent Commission for Infrastructure to be more transparent in its proceedings. If we may recall, Mr. Chair, see proceedings related to public works projects sa' house has already been terminated and the same hearing sa' senado is now uh, in a turbulent waters given the resignation of the chair. So the only body now investigating is the ICI, but the, its proceedings is not transparent, so we do not know what's going on. So this resolution is strongly urging the Independent Commission for Infrastructure to adopt a policy of transparency by holding public proceedings in its investigation of corruption in public works. So move, Mr. Chair.
Join and collective?
On join and collective motion.
Next item please.
Next is the proposed resolution authored by Honorable Hilda Gail Abunal Gomez enjoining employees of the city government of Naga to participate in the Emotional Wellness Month in celebration of the World Mental Health Month, stressing the importance of wellness in the workplace.
Councilor Gail Abunal Gomez.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the Human Resources Office, um, designed a program called Emotional Wellness Program for our employees and we are launching this, uh, this month in celebration of the World Mental Health Month. So with this, Mr. Chair, we enjoined our employees to participate and for the department heads to be supportive of this program. So may I move for the passage of this proposed resolution, Mr. Chair.
Join and collective again?
On join and collective motion, Mr. Chair.
Next item?
Next item is a resolution authored by the Honorable Jepson Romeo. Um, congratulating and commending... Ay, already na po. Tapos na po ini.
Just relax, Madam Secretary.
Um, the proposed, the proposed resolution of Honorable Hilda Gail Abunal Gomez congratulating and commending Giancarlo Penaas of Ateneo Dinaaga University for ranking ninth in the April 2025 Civil Engineering Licenseure Examination held last April 28 to 29 of this year.
Councilor Gail?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Giancarlo A. Penaas is a student of Ateneo Dinaaga University and is also from Concepcion, Pakenya and he ranked ninth in the April 2025 Civil Engineers Licenseure Examination. So I propose, Mr. Chair, that we pass a resolution congratulating and commending him. So move, Mr. Chair.
Again, join and collective.
On join and collective motion, Mr. Chair.
Next item please.
The next item is another, uh, uh, resolution authored by the Honorable Gomez congratulating and commending Nicole Therese El Sumalabi of Ateneo Dinaaga University for ranking seventh in the September 2025 Psychometrician's Licenseure Examination held last September 24 to 25 of this year.
Again, Councilor Gail Abunal Gomez?
Yes, similarly, Mr. Chair, may I propose a resolution that's congratulating and commending Nicole Therese Sumalabi a student of Ateneo Dinaaga University, Department of Psychology and, uh, is from Karangahan Kalawag who ranked seventh in the recently concluded Psychometrician's Licenseure Examination. On join and collective motion, Mr. Chair.
Again, join and collective.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next item please.
The next item is the proposed resolutions authored by the Honorable Jepson Romeo Felix urging strict adherence to the General Appropriations Act Department of Public Works and Highways, Department Budget Number 23 and Department of Budget and Management, National Budget Circular 595, directing the DPWH Regional Office to undertake corrective action on the diversions of funds intended for the construction of the Sangguniang Kabataan Federation Office in Barangay Balatas and calling on the Commission on Audit to conduct an audit review for possible notice of disallowance and restitution of funds.
Councilor Felix, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is related to, um, the matter that I brought up la-last, um, 12th regular session. So, pursuant to the legal opinion, Mr. Chair, that was released by the City Legal Office dated September 8, 2025, they concluded that, um, the diversion of funds intended for the SKF office to another project is unauthorized, invalid and without legal basis and a such modification is not allowed under DPWH Department Order Number 23, Series of 2023 and the DBM National Budget Circular Number 595, Series of 2025. And the same legal opinion, Mr. Chair, established the, that the diversion of funds for another project, notwithstanding barangay consultations, amounts to technical malversation under Article 220 of the Revised Penal Code and may likewise constitute violations of the Anti-Graft and Corrupt Practices Act, or the RA 3019. And also, Mr. Chair, the same legal opinion recommends that given the facts and the combined authorities of the GAH in the DPWH Department Order Number 23 and the NBC 595, the Sangguniang Panlunsod may adopt a formal resolution urging strict adherence to these instruments and calling upon the DPWH and COAT to undertake appropriate corrective actions. Um, so, um, now therefore, Mr. Chair, um, under, under this proposed resolution, five items are proposed. First is to urge the DPWH Regional Office to formally investigate and explain the diversion of funds originally appropriated for the SKF office in Barangay Balatas and take appropriate corrective and restitution measures. and take appropriate corrective and restitution measures in accordance with, um, the said documents. Next, Mr. Chairman, is to request the commission audit to conduct an audit review of the project concerned, that determine whether expenditures are inconsistent with the GAH and issue a notice of disallowance if warranted to effect restitution and accountability of responsible officials. Third, Mr. Chairman, is to direct the city government of Naga through the Office of the City Legal Officer to formally communicate with, um, DPWH and COA in transmitting this resolution together with, um, their legal opinion. Fourth, Mr. Chairman, is to support the Sangguneang Kabataan Federation of Naga City in pursuing recovery of its rightful projection allocation under the GAH. And, um, fifth, Mr. Chairman, to reiterate the city government's firm commitment to upholding the principles of accountability, transparency, and participatory governance. Um, as to date, Mr. Chairman, um, we have been informed that the project is nearing its completion. So basically, mayon namat po talaga kaming habol. It's just that, uh, we need, um, black and white papers that we did something, uh, knowing the fact that, uh, patapos sa' si project and sa' lapos sa' implementation.
So kindly make the final motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So with this, Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass a resolution urging strict adherence to the GAH, the DPWH, um, Department Order 23 and the DBM Circular 595, directing the DPWH, um, Regional Office to undertake corrective, corrective action on the diversion of funds intended for the construction of the SKF office in Barangay Balatas, and calling on the commission on audit to conduct an audit review for possible notice of disallowance and restitution of funds. So I move, Mr. Chairman.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is, uh, proposed resolution authored by the Honorable Wilfredo Jude Jocno authorizing the city mayor to accept and sign the deed of donation for and in behalf of the local government unit of Naga, administered by the donor MacTec Logistics Philippines Incorporated, represented by Yolanda M. Abastillas as president, for the acceptance of one unit motor vehicle for the exclusive use of the Solid Waste Management Office in the conduct of its information education campaign and other related activities in line with the city's waste management program.
Counselor Wilfredo Jude Jocno?
Wil, uh, Chairman, uh, subject vehicle, a brand-new, uh, utility vehicle. Uh, the, the physical, uh, possession of the vehicle is already with the, uh, Solid Waste Management Office. It was received by, uh, Engineer Joel Martin, uh, last September 9th. So the, the resolution is a formality, uh, granting. May I move for the passage of this resolution authorizing city, uh, Mayor, uh, Lenny Roberto to accept and sign the deed of donation for and in behalf of the local government unit of Naga, administered by the donor, uh, MacTec Logistics Philippines, represented by Yolanda M. Abastillas as president, and for the acceptance of one unit motor vehicle for the exclusive use of the Solid Waste Management Office in the conduct of its information education campaign and other related activities in line with the city's waste management program. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Counselor Mendoza?
Uh, related to that resolution, uh, I also move on joint and collective motion, a resolution expressing the appreciation and gratitude of the city government to the donation by MacTec Logistics Philippines of one unit vehicle.
Join and collective. Next item, please.
Under unfinished business, uh, first is the committee report of the Committee on Manpower and Livelihood Development for the rest, uh, I... I, we, SBO number one na po, sir. Um, unfinished business, the committee report of the Committee on Manpower and Livelihood Development for the hearing dated October 1st, 2025.
Chairman? Where is the chairman of the Committee on Livelihood?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to defer to the next item.
Temporarily defer.
Next is the...
We temporarily defer discussion of this report?
The absence of the chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Next is the letter dated September 19th of Berhailio Eduardo, DPWH Regional Director, pertaining to Espa Resolution Number 2025415. With information that the data requested in the said resolution is, uh, available in the DPWH's official website.
Any reaction from the chairman of the Committee on Infrastructure? Counselor Mendoza?
Uh, that relates to a pre, to an earlier resolution requesting DPWHs for information on the projects implemented in Naga City as posted by the president, uh, including the projects implemented by the concerned contractors. Uh, the response is that those information that were requested are, uh, can be found in that, uh, online link. Uh, I had checked that, uh, this evening, Mr. Chairman, but I've not yet exhausted all the information available. We can just take note of it.
Okay, thank you. Next item? Yes, Counselor Albios?
Related to that, can we request the ESP secretariat to furnish the copy, individual copy to the city councilors?
Okay, so, Mr., uh, Madam Secretary, kindly furnish all members of, uh, the Sangguneang Panglongsood, including our counterparts, copies of that particular, uh, document. Next item, please.
The next item is a letter dated September 25th from Dr. Joseph Sanchez, following up on the request for a passage of an ordinance prescribing fees for certain services of the Naga City General Hospital and for the request for the inclusion of the new service offered by this, uh, said hospital.
Okay, we will refer this to the Committee on Ways and Means?
Next is the proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Elmer Valdemoro, co-authored by Honorable Japson Romeo Felix, institutionalizing the Naga City Youth Employment Program and providing funds therefore.
We will refer this to the Committee on Appropriations?
Next is the Committee Report on Information Technology authored by the Honorable Alan Riz Makaray, chaired by the Honorable Alan Riz Makaray.
The chairman, Counselor Riz Makaray.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Um, may, may I request for the recognition of the acknowledgement of the report of the Committee on Information and Technology?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, two, three. We have two matters resolved.
Did you have a quorum?
You have two matters, uh, your, Mr. Chairman?
Did you have a quorum?
Yes, I'm, I'm about to say, Mr. Chairman. Um, however,
There was no...
There was no quorum, and, uh, may I move that the... the plenary be transformed into committee of the whole, Mr. Chairman?
So we are constituting ourselves into the committee of the whole?
May I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
The first business, proposed ordinance by Honorable Japson Romeo Felix and the City Youth Counselor Joshua Constantino, establishing a comprehensive governance framework for the responsible use and innovation in artificial intelligence technologies in the city of Naga. Um, this was... May I move to the disposition, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Um... The committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguneang Panglongsood to recommend, requesting again, the academe, as well as other IT institutions and professionals previously identified by the Sangguneang Committee to submit their comments on the proposed ordinance, establishing a comprehensive governance within seven days upon their receipt thereof.
So move?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the second la, and last, uh, item is the letter dated August 15th, 2025 by, uh, Mr. Arthur Abunal, requesting for a passage of an ord, resolution setting reasonable rental fees for the use of city government vehicles and equipment. May I move to the disposition, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
On motion of Honorable Elmer S. Valdemoro, duly seconded by Honorable Frank Mendoza, the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the ESP and to re, recommend its referral to the Committee on Ways and Means, uh, together with the proposed ordinance authored by Honorable Francisco Mendoza for appropriate... for appropriate action, Mr. Chairman. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
That ends the report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Riz Makaray. Next item?
Next is the Committee Report of the Committee on People Empowerment and Good Governance, uh, chaired by the Honorable Hilda Gail Abunal Gomez.
Committee on People Empowerment? Uh, the chairperson is Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez.
For the Committee on People Empowerment and Good Governance, Mr. Chairman, may I request acknowledgement for this report?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
Um, the meeting was held last October 2nd. Um, there was no quorum, so may I request that this plenary be converted into a committee of the whole?
Again, we constitute ourselves into the committee of the whole?
The first item is a letter dated August 25th of Mr. Tonyo A. Cataneo submitting their application for accreditation as a non-government organization. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
On motion of Honorable Elmer S. Valdemoro, duly seconded by Mr. Santo Domingo, the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguneang Panglongsood and to recommend the approval of the application for accreditation of the Federation of Caballicat Civilian Communicators in Region 5 Incorporated, Naga City Chapter as a civil society organization. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The second item, a letter dated August 18th, 2025 of Mr. Jean-Paul M. Nantes, President, Chamber Music Accompanists, Naga City, signifying their intent to apply for accreditation with the Sangguneang Panglongsood as a non-government organization. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
On motion of Honorable Elmer S. Valdemoro, duly seconded by Mr. Santo Domingo, the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguneang Panglongsood and to recommend the granting of a certificate of recognition to the Chamber Music Accompanists as a civil organization pursuant to Section 4.3.5.4 of the DILG Memorandum Circular 2025-060. Resolved further to recommend to the, so move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Uh, it is resolved further to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglongsood the Amendment of Ordinance Number 1995-092, otherwise known as the Empowerment Ordinance of Naga City, to incorporate the provision of the DILG Memorandum Circular 2025-060 regarding the grant of a certificate of recognition to qualified civil society organizations. So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Third item, letter dated August 15th, 2025 of Mr. Mark Lester B. Acompañado, President, Two Silver Coins Charity Volunteers Incorporated, Naga City, signifying their intent to apply for accreditation with the Sangguneang Panglongsood as an NGO. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Elmer S. Valdemoro, duly seconded by Mr. Elmer Santo Domingo, the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguneang Panglongsood and to recommend the approval of the application for accreditation of the Two Silver Coins Charity Volunteers Incorporated as a CSO. So move, Mr. Chairman?
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Fourth item, Application for Accreditation of the Naga City Persons with Disabilities Vendors Association. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
The committee resolved to defer consideration of the application of the Naga City Persons with Disability Vendors Association pending compliance of the minimum one-year operational requirements as per ordinance number 1995-092. So move, Mr. Chairman?
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Fifth item, the letter dated August 18th of Jerry A. Nasol, President of Red Zone Tricycle Operator and Drivers Association, signifying their intent to apply for accreditation. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Elmer S. Valdemoro, seconded by Mr. Santo Domingo, the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguneang Panglongsood and to recommend the approval of the application for accreditation of the Red Zone Tricycle Operator and Drivers Association as a civil society organization. So move, Mr. Chairman?
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Sixth item, letter dated August 18th, 2025 of Rachel J. Pimpolio, President of the City College of Naga Alumni Association, signifying their intent to apply for accreditation as an NGO. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
On motion of Honorable Elmer S. Valdemoro, duly seconded by Mr. Santo Domingo, the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguneang Panglongsood and to recommend the approval of the application for the accreditation of CCN Alumni Association as a CSO. So move, Mr. Chairman?
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The last item, Mr. Chairman, is the undated letter of Ray J. Rodelas, City Director of CACG Naga City Camarinesor, submitting their intent to apply for accreditation as a non-government organization in Naga City. Um, together with this, Mr. Chairman, is a resolution of the, uh, CACG manifesting their intention to apply because in the previous committee hearing, this was the requirement that was lacking from the, uh, organization. And they were able to, uh, submit it already, Mr. Chairman. So may I go to the disposition?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Elmer S. Valdemoro, duly seconded by Mr. Santo Domingo, the committee resolved to elevate the matter, uh, to the Sangguneang Panglongsood and to recommend the approval of the application for accreditation of the community anti-crime group as a civil society organization. So move, Mr. Chairman? That's all for the report.
There being none, the motion is approved.
That's all for the report, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez. Next item, please.
Can we go back, please, to the proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Elmer Valdemoro, authored by Honorable Japson Romeo, institutionalizing the Naga City Youth Employment Program and providing funds thereof?
Counselor Valdemoro?
May I move, Mr. Chairman, to refer this to the Committee on Children, uh, Committee on Appropriation together with Committee on Youth Development?
Committee on Appropriations and the Committee on Youth Development?
Uh, the Committee Report of the Manpower and Livelihood Development authored by the, uh, chaired by the Honorable Elmer Valdemoro. I'm sorry.
Counselor Valdemoro?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, may I seek acknowledgement to the committee report of the committee hearing on, of the Committee on Manpower and Livelihood Development?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the committee hearing held on October 1st, 2025 and there were, uh, there was no quorum, so my, I request for the conversion of the plenary as a committee of the whole.
Again, we are, we will be acting as the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one, the proposed resolution authored by the Honorable Nathan... Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number one, the proposed resolution authored by the Honorable Nathan Serio and City Youth Counselor Pati Mayanga, requesting and authorizing the city mayor to initiate and enter into a partnership agreement with the Naga College Foundation, particularly with the Center for Rural Entrepreneurship and Economic Development, which developed various training programs in lifelong learning development that could benefit the city of Naga and its people. May I go directly to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of Honorable Francisco Mendoza, duly seconded by the Honorable Wilfredo J. Jocno, the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguyan Panglongsood as a committee of the whole and recommend the approval of the proposed resolution, requesting and authorizing the city mayor to initiate and enter into a partnership agreement with the Naga College Foundation, the Center for Rural Entrepreneurship and Economic Development. That the engagement with the Naga College Foundation, the outcome based and aligned with the administration finish line. Furthermore, the committee directed the city legal office to drop the memorandum of agreement on the matter, identifying the Model Barangay or Model Community. Without Mr. Chair, may I request the acknowledgement of the proponent, the Honorable Nathan Serio?
Yes, Counselor Nathan Serio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move formally that we pass that resolution, requesting and authorizing the city mayor to initiate and enter into a partnership agreement with the Naga College Foundation, particularly with the Center for Rural Entrepreneurship and Economic Development, which develop various training programs in lifelong and learning development that could benefit the city of Naga and its people, subject to the conditions set forth by the committee.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Item number two, Resolution 2025-006, 2025 City Youth Sangguyan Panglongsood, urging the city government of Naga to develop, implement, and strengthen inclusive and sustainable livelihood programs and opportunities for persons with disability in the city of Naga. May I go directly to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Francisco Mendoza, duly seconded by the Honorable Wilfredo J. Jocno, the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguyan Panglongsood as committee of the whole and recommend the adoption of Resolution Number 2025-006 of the 2025 City Youth Sangguyan Panglongsood, urging the city government of Naga to develop, implement, and strengthen inclusive and sustainable livelihood programs and opportunities for persons with disabilities in the city of Naga. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Furthermore, the committee directed the Persons with Disability Affairs Office to submit a report on the existing livelihood programs for persons with disabilities. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
That's end my report, Mr. Chairman Mabalaspo.
Thank you, Counselor Elmer Baldimoro. Next item, please.
Next is the Committee Report on Public Utilities chaired by the Honorable Jesse Albius.
Committee Chairman Jesse Albius.
Mr. Chair, may I request acknowledgement of the report of the Committee on Public Utilities?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
The committee hearing was held on October 2, 2025, and there was no quorum, so may I request that this body be converted into a committee of the whole?
Again, this body is being converted into the committee of the whole?
First item is letter dated September 17, 2025 of Ruby Jane Sia Isla, Business Development Head, Ruby Shelter Builders and Realty Development Corporation, submitting the improvements they have undertaken in the eastbound PUB terminal as promised. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
The committee took note of the report and expressed its appreciation to the management of Ruby Builders and Realty Development Corporation for their continued efforts towards the improvement of the Naga eastbound PUB terminal. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Item number two is letter dated August 28, 2025 of Mr. Alberto C. Villaferte, the third seat assessor furnishing a copy of the report to the Metropolitan Nagawater District pertaining to the road right-of-way for the proposed waterline projects in Barangay Kararayan and Carolina, Naga City. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable David Casper Nathan Serio, duly seconded by Honorable Adan, Honorable Zapanta, and Honorable Laurare, the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguyan Panglongsood and to recommend furnishing the city legal office with the report of the city assessor for verification through its records of the status of the identified properties for any pending donation or turnover. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
We serve further to direct the Sangguyan Panglongsood Secretariat to review its archives for any ordinance or resolution pertaining to the said property. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
That ends the report of the Committee on Public Utilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Jesse Albius.
Next is the Committee on Land Use, again authored by... again chaired by the Honorable Albius.
Counselor Jesse Albius.
Mr. Chair, may I request acknowledgement of the report of the Committee on Land Use?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
The committee hearing was held on October 3, 2025, and there was a quorum. So first item is letter dated September 1, 2025 of Ms. Peachy Edyan David, on behalf of Catmon 1 Residence pertaining to their complaint against repeated violations committed by the operator of Zelda Trece and El Chico Smokehouse. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Francisco Mendoza, seconded by Honorable Nathan Serio, Punong Barangay Robin Limbo, Honorable Laurare, Honorable Kamata, Honorable Dela Cruz, and Engineer Hurley De La Strias, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguyan Panglongsood to direct the City Planning and Development Office to implement a cease and desist order to Ms. Charlene Samora Saludo of Zelda Trece, El Chico Smokehouse located in Barangay Balatas, D.C., to stop any business operations until such time that all the required permits are complied. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Item number two is letter dated April 15, 2025 of the City Planning and Development Office, submitting their technical evaluation on the documents submitted by Ms. Joan Bolano Binondo in relation to her application for a special use permit for the proposed Habibi Resto Bar at Barangay Triangulo, Naga City. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable David Casper Nathan Serio, seconded by Honorable Francisco Mendoza, Punong Barangay Limbo, Honorable Laurare, Honorable Kamata, Honorable Dela Cruz, and Engineer Hurley De La Strias, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguyan Panglongsood to pass a resolution granting Ms. Joan Bolano Binondo for a special use permit for the proposed Habibi Resto Bar located at Barangay Triangulo, Naga City. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
That ends the report, Mr. Chair. Thank you and good morning.
Thank you very much, Counselor Jesse Albius. Next item, please.
Next is the Committee Report on Disaster Risk and Resiliency, Environment, and Energy chaired by the Honorable Alan Riz Makarayig.
I understand that this is a joint committee hearing of the Committee on Disaster Risk and Resiliency, Committee on Environment and Energy, Committee on Laws and Ordinances, and Committee on Peace and Order and Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Chair. For the record, I am the chairperson for Disaster Risk and Resiliency. However, the chairman is Counselor Jocno for Environment and Energy, and Laws and Ordinances is Counselor Gil Rosales, while that for Peace and Order Committee and Public Safety is Counselor Omar Benafe. This is a quadcommittee report, Mr. Chair.
Quadcom, huh?
This is the quadcom, Mr. Chair. Fortunately, there was no quorum, Mr. Chair. So, this was held last October 1.
So we will be constituting ourselves into the committee of the whole?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two items. May I first request for the acknowledgement, Mr. Chair, of the report? Thank you, Mr. Chair. First is the proposed ordinance authored by Honorable Francisco Mendoza, reclaiming the esements of creeks, rivers, and other waterways within the territorial jurisdiction of Naga City, providing for clearing of illegal structures and obstructions prohibiting the dumping of waste, providing for violations thereof, and establishing and implementing mechanism and providing funds therefore. There was a lengthy discussion about this, Mr. Chair, and this was joined by almost all of the Punong barangays present. And they were agreeable to the proposed ordinance. However, they would like to be given some time to make a formal comment, a written comment, for any additions that they want to include in the proposed ordinance. May I move to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of Honorable Francisco Mendoza, seconded by Honorable Gil Rosales, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguyan to defer the matter, wait for the suggestions and recommendations of the Punong barangays. And the SP Secretariat is directed to provide all Punong barangays copies of the proposed ordinance of Honorable Francisco Mendoza. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Second item is the proposed ordinance authored by Honorable Melvin Ramon G. Benafe, establishing the Naga City Safety and Resilience CCTV Program. However, he was on official leave during the quadcom, Mr. Chair. So, the committee... the members considered the matter deferred. So move, Mr. Chair.
So deferred?
Third and last item is the Barangay Resolution of Sangguyan Barangay of Concepcion, Pecania, requesting the city mayor and the Sangguyan Panglongsood to study the flash flood at Barangay Concepcion, Pecania, Naga City. This was elaborated by the Punong barangay Francis Mendoza. And may I move to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
The body took note of the matter and informed Punong barangay Francis Mendoza that the city government of Naga is already studying the matter to address the issue at the soonest possible time. And this was accepted by the good Punong barangay, Mr. Chair. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
That ends the quadcom report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ariz Makarayig. Next item, please.
Next is the Committee Report on Women and Gender Development and Children chaired by the Honorable Hilda Gail Abunal Gomez.
Counselor Abunal Gomez.
Mr. Chair, for the committee hearing on women and gender development joint with children, may I request acknowledgement of this report?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
The meeting was held last October 2. There was no quorum, Mr. Chair.
There was no quorum?
So may I request that this...
So again, we will convene us the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item is a proposed ordinance by this representation co-authored with the Honorable Elmer S. Baldimoro and our city youth counterparts enacting the Naga City Parental Responsibility Ordinance. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
The committee resolved to recommend to the plenary the approval of the proposed ordinance subject to the submission of the revised copy incorporating the suggestions made by the committee. Mr. Chair, the revised copy has been submitted yesterday. May I ask the body if they have gone through it, and if so, may I present this for second reading, Mr. Chair?
So you are now presenting the ordinance on second reading?
On second reading, Mr. Chair.
And have you provided the members of the council copies of that revised ordinance or proposed ordinance?
The copy was sent only yesterday, Mr. Chair. That's why I am asking if the body would be amenable to me presenting this for second reading? Or this just be presented on the next session, Mr. Chair?
So we will tackle this during the next session?
During the next session to give time to my colleagues to peruse the proposed ordinance, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second item is a proposed ordinance sponsored by this representation, amending ordinance number 2019-037, promulgating the Gender and Development Code of Naga City mandating the implementation of a comprehensive and sustainable gender development program, creating the implementing mechanism thereof and providing funds for the purpose. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
This ordinance, Mr. Chair, is actually introduced by Vice Mayor Cecilia Velos de Assis as a result of a ride shop that she attended. She asked this representation to sponsor. However, upon discussion with the Naga City Gender and Development Council, the council saw it proper that we go to... we just revisit first the entire CAD code before introducing the amendments requested by the then-Vice Mayor Cecilia Velos de Assis. Therefore, Mr. Chair, the committee resolved to direct the Naga City Gender and Development Council to revisit the CAD code as necessary in order to assess the need to incorporate the proposed amendments sponsored by former Vice Mayor de Assis. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
That's the end of the report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez. Next item, please.
Next is the Committee Report on Culture and the Arts chaired by the Honorable David Casper Nathan Serio.
The Committee on Culture and the Arts headed by the Honorable Counselor David Casper Nathan Serio.
May I request acknowledgement of this report?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
The hearing was conducted last October 3, Mr. Chair, and there was no quorum.
Again, there was no quorum, so...
May I request that this... the plenary be transformed into a committee of the whole?
This plenary is being transformed into the committee of the whole?
For item number one, the position paper submitted signed by Judge Solomon Santos, retired of the Naga City Culture and Naga City Arts and Culture Coalition and Father Francis Torilla, President Saisai Bicol, on the Nueva Caseres Ruins Heritage Site Conservation Development Plan. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Those present during the committee hearing is proposing to direct the secretariat to furnish the senior citizens' counterparts with hard copies of the position papers of both parties, including the city planning evaluation and the letter from the NHCP, the one lifting the CDO, and also the clarification it made from the query of the Nagaland Corporation, including also the queries of the city legal office for their evaluation. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none? Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Another disposition is to schedule the next executive session on October 10, Mr. Chair, this Friday at 3 o'clock in the afternoon with the approval of Counselor Jesse Albius, whose 3:00 PM schedule is for one of his committees.
Okay, so October 10.
Item number two, the Unified Position Paper of Naga City Historical and Cultural Heritage Advocates Coalition. For the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Because this is the same with the first item, the same disposition.
Okay.
That's my report.
Next item, please.
Next, the Committee Report of the Committee on Laws and Ordinances, chaired by the Honorable Hilda Rosales.
Counselor Uyeng Rosales.
Mr. Chairman, may I move for the acknowledgement of the report? The Committee on Laws and Ordinances for meeting held last October 2, 2025.
Your report is duly acknowledged?
There was a quorum during the committee hearing.
Finally, there was a quorum. Okay.
The first item is the barangay ordinance from barangay del Rosario, barangay ordinance number 2025-6 establishing the Del Rosario Assistance and Welfare Program in the said barangay. For review, may I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
The committee resolved to recommend to the plenary the passage of a resolution declaring valid barangay ordinance number 2025-6 of barangay del Rosario establishing the Del Rosario Assistance and Welfare Program in the said barangay. Isome, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The second item is a barangay ordinance number 1-2025 of barangay Concepcion Grande, adopting the official seal of the said barangay. And another ordinance, ordinance number 2-2025 mandating installation of tactile mandating tiles in all public spaces and infrastructure in the barangay for the benefit of the blind and visually impaired persons. Two barangay ordinances are being subjected for review by the Sangguneang Panglongsood. For the disposition, Mr. Chair, may I proceed?
Yes, please.
Two dispositions. First, on barangay ordinance number 1, 2025, the committee resolved to pass a resolution declaring valid barangay ordinance number 1-2025 of barangay Concepcion Grande adopting the official seal of the said barangay. Isome, Mr. Chairman?
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
On the second barangay ordinance, barangay ordinance number 2-2025, mandating installation of tactile tiles in all public spaces and infrastructure in the barangay for the benefit of the blind and visually impaired persons, the committee resolved to pass a resolution declaring valid barangay ordinance number 2-2025. Isome, Mr. Chairman?
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The third item is a proposed ordinance authored by Honorable Francisco Mendoza, rationalizing the lease rental of the occupants of the Panganiban Beautification and Upgrading Project at the Philippine National Railways property along Panganiban Drive. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
The committee resolved to recommend to the plenary the transfer of the proposed ordinance from this committee to the Committee on Ways and Means. Isome, Mr. Chairman?
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The fourth item is a proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Alan Riz Makaraig mandating businesses operating within the territorial jurisdiction of the city of Naga to install a closed circuit television system attached or comments from the city legal officer and a revised draft from the same proponents. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
The committee resolved to recommend to the plenary the approval on second reading of the proposed ordinance as entitled. The Honorable Ariz Alan Riz Makaraig is requested to be recognized, Mr. Chairman, for the discussion.
Counselor Ariz Makaraig.
Mr. Chair, the copy of the ordinance has not yet been submitted. May I instead move that the reading on second reading be made in the next session, Mr. Chair?
Okay, so we will defer this tackling of this matter and we will schedule it during the next session.
That ends my committee report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Uyeng Rosales. Next item, please.
Next item is the proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Japson Romeo Felix, institutionalizing dikatipunan ng mga barangay standardization framework in Naga City, establishing city online guidelines, contextualized modalities, and support mechanism for the conduct of KK assemblies, youth profiling, and participatory consultation in every barangay toward a transparent, inclusive, and data-informed youth governance system.
Counselor Gair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This proposed ordinance has been approved on second reading last August, Mr. Chair. And also it has been revised in accordance with the recommendations manifested by Counselor Baldimoro that time. So, in its revision, Mr. Chair, Section 6.4, on page number 10, we have cited here that venue accessibility and appropriateness. The matters for revision, Mr. Chair, is about the accessibility for PWDs, Mr. Chair. So we have cited here that venue accessibility and appropriateness. So it says here that regardless of the modality adopted, desk shall ensure that KK assemblies are conducted in venues that meet the following minimum standards of accessibility, safety, and inclusiveness. So point 1, Mr. Chair, physical accessibility features para sa mga venues must be ensured for persons with disabilities, including safe ramps, wide access points, and unobstructed entrances and exits. And also, Mr. Chair, Section 9.4 on page 21, it reads as follows, language use and accessibility protocols. 21, ah, yeah. Yeah, language use and accessibility protocols. Number 1, KK assemblies must be conducted in the dominant language understood by the youth in the barangay, whether in Filipino, Bicol, or another local vernacular, ensuring clarity, relatability, and participations. Point number 2, Mr. Chair, barangays are encouraged to provide visual aids, rented handouts, or sign language interpreters when there are KK members with visual, hearing, or cognitive disabilities present. And number 3, all assemblies shall comply with accessibility standards detailed under Section 6 of this ordinance, Mr. Chair.
So that was tackled last...
Last August, Mr. Chair.
August on second reading?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And then all the modifications, amendments?
Has been incorporated, Mr. Chair.
Have been incorporated into the final draft?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So can you make a final motion now?
So this ordinance, Mr. Chair, is actually for third and final reading. If there are, if ever there are no more comments, Mr. Chair?
I think we discussed this during the second reading.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So we are now on the third and final reading.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, given that, Mr. Chair, may now move that we pass this ordinance institutionalizing dakatipunan ng kabataan standardization framework on third and final reading.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Congratulations, Counselor Japson Felix. Next item, please.
Next item is the proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Japson Felix, establishing the barangay Youth Development Council in the Naga City as the grassroots counterpart of the Naga City Council for Youth Development, defining its structure, composition, functions, and coordinative relationship with the Sangguneang Kabataan, providing funding implementation mechanisms and other purposes to strengthen youth participation in the local governance.
Again, Counselor Japson Felix.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This matter is to be referred back to the Committee on Youth and Sports, Mr. Chair, for the approval of the committee.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Next item is a letter dated October 6 from Mr. Rodrigo Reparsado, peso manager, requesting his office to provide a report within seven days on the efficiency of the special program for employment of students and the summer employment for enrollment program, a summary of the deployment of the 2025 beneficiary, and an evaluation of the readiness of the various city government offices to accommodate the beneficiaries of the said programs.
Counselor Baldimoro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This pertained, Mr. Chair, to my proposed ordinance. So may I move to refer this matter to the Committee on Appropriation together with the Committee on Youth and Sports?
Committee on Appropriations and the Committee on Youth and Sports. Next item?
Is the proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Melvin Ramon Benape, an ordinance authorizing qualified barangay tanods to augment the public safety office as traffic enforcers, providing for their minimum qualifications, training, and city defutation, authority in the enforcement of certain laws and city ordinances related to traffic regulation and management, institutionalizing a supervisory body and providing funds therefore.
Counselor Omar Benape?
Mr. Chair, this is a revised copy of the proposed ordinance, which is now pending on the appropriate committee. This will be tackled by the committee. Yes, the Laws and Ordinances Committee, Mr. Chair.
Laws and Ordinances. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Next item, please.
Next is a letter dated October 6 from the city mayor requesting the Sangguneang Panglongsood request the ratification by the Sangguneang Panglongsood of the memorandum agreement entered into bind between the city government, Viscas de la Sal University and the University of the Philippines National Center for Transportation relative to the development of a sustainable, safe, and inclusive urban transport system in the city of Naga.
Counselor Benape?
Mr. Chair, we previously gave authority to the city mayor to enter into a memorandum of cooperation or understanding memorandum agreement. And this was already signed, so the city mayor is now asking for its ratification. So I move, Mr. Chair, that we ratify the said memorandum agreement.
Any second? Any objection? Objection?
No, no, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez?
Not an objection, Mr. Chair. I just have a concern. May I request, Mr. Chair, to be excused? May I request, Mr. Chair, to be excused from the session for a personal matter, Mr. Chair?
Second, Mr. Chair.
So this is not related to the...
I'm sorry, no, Mr. Chair.
Ordinance. So the motion is approved. Next item, please.
Next is a letter dated October 6 from the city mayor requesting for the ratifications of the extrajudicial settlement of estate with absolute sale executed between the ears of Rosita Febres and the city government of Naga for the acquisition of a portion of land required as road right-of-way for the San Isidro sanitary landfill.
Yes, Counselor Jesse Albius?
In previous sessions, the Sangguneang Panglongsood passed a resolution authorizing the city mayor to negotiate and sign the extrajudicial settlement of estate with absolute sale with the ears of Rosita Febres for the acquisition of a 293 square meter portion of land located at barangay San Isidro, Naga City. The rate was 400 pesos per square meter for a total consideration of 117,200 pesos. So may I move that we pass a resolution ratifying the said extrajudicial settlement of estate with absolute sale with the following particulars: to confirm and approve the extrajudicial settlement of estate with absolute sale executed by in between the ears of Rosita Febres and the city government of Naga; number 2, authorize the city mayor to implement the terms of this instrument, including the processing of payments, adjust compensation, and related documentary requirements; and 3 is to recognize the inclusion of this transaction as part of the city's continuing land acquisition program for public infrastructure and environmental management facilities. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Yes, Counselor Ariz Makaraig?
May we just clarify, Mr. Chair? We are ratifying the portion only of the deed of sale because we cannot ratify an extrajudicial settlement portion, Mr. Chair?
Counselor Albius, reaction?
The deed of sale only, Mr. Chair.
So we are ratifying the deed of sale?
We cannot ratify an extrajudicial because we are not part of that document, Mr. Chair?
What is your reaction, Counselor Albius?
Mr. Chair, the document signed by the city mayor has the heading extrajudicial settlement of estate with absolute sale. And it was notarized by Attorney Chris Mondliano.
I'm just manifesting, Mr. Chair.
Just a manifestation coming from a lawyer, Counselor Ariz Makaraig? So the motion was seconded and no objection was made? So the motion is approved. Next item, please.
Next is a letter dated October 6 from the city mayor requesting for the ratification of the Sangguneang Panglongsood the memorandum agreement entered into bind between the city government of Naga and the University of Neba Caseres relative to the implementation of idea to start up project authority to enter the agreement, which was previously granted by the SP through Resolution 2025-379.
Counselor Ariz Makaraig?
I respectfully move that the request of this honorable city mayor be granted by the Sangguneang Panglongsood, ratifying the agreement between UNC and the city government. This is relative to the disaster risk portion of the idea to start up project, Mr. Chair, which was tackled indeed in the Sangguneang Panglongsood Resolution 2025-379. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Next item?
Next item is a letter dated October 6 from the city mayor requesting the ratification by the Sangguneang Panglongsood of the memorandum agreement entered into bind between the city government of Naga and Gawad Kalinga Community Development Foundation Incorporated relative to the donation and construction of 30 housing units on a parcel of land owned by the city located at Sitio Salongigi, barangay Kararayan, Naga City. The authority was entered and granted by the Sangguneang Panglongsood.
Counselor Jesse Albius?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The memorandum of agreement was granted authority to the city mayor through Sangguneang Panglongsood Resolution number 2025-439. And the city mayor is requesting for ratification of the memorandum of agreement entered into between the city government and Gawad Kalinga Community Development. between the city government and Gawad Kalinga Community Development Foundation relative to the donation and construction of thirty housing units on a parcel of land located at Sitio Salongigi, barangay Karayan, Naga City. So may I move that we ratify the said memorandum of agreement. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Next is another letter from the city mayor requesting ratification of the memorandum agreement entered into bind between the city government of Naga and Safe Travel PH Mobility Innovation Organization relative to the development pilot testing and validation of the parasol platform.
Counselor Omar Buenafe.
Mr. Chair, this uh agreement is wherein we previously authorized the city mayor to represent Naga City in this memorandum of agreement wherein uh this is going to be a research uh project jointly by the Safe Travel Mobility Innovations Organization. And uh it will be tackling primarily the modernization of our uh transport system in Naga City. So I move, Mr. Chair, that we ratify the memorandum of agreement entered into by the city government of Naga and Safe Travel Mobility Innovations. And I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Another letter uh requesting the Sangunyang Panglusod for a passage of resolution authorizing the city mayor to enter into negotiate and sign the memorandum agreement of understanding with Bicol Medical Center in relation to receiving, managing, and returning of repaired cases from lower-level facilities within the health care provider network.
I think we have already tackled that, Madam Secretary. Next item, please.
Under new business, the undated letter of Alfredo San Juan President of San Isidro Labrador Urban Purification uh requesting for certain facilities to be installed in their community.
Uh Committee on Housing and Settlements. Next item.
Next is a letter dated the September thirty of Eduardo Jose Mercado applying for a permit to hold there via October.
And amusement?
Uh proposed ordinance authored by the CYO John Sebastian Flores. Uh
Committee on Health.
Proposed uh ordinance authored by the Honorable Bito Borja prescribing a comprehensive guideline for the utilization.
Committee on Health.
Uh proposed uh ordinance again by Honorable Bito Borja establishing the linkage between this surveillance system, help.
Again, Committee on Health.
A letter dated July twenty-five from Rene Gumba expressing the reservation regarding this request of barangay Santa Corta.
Committee.
Proposed resolution authored by the Honorable Sergio authorizing the city mayor to initiate and enter to a sister city agreement with the city Casares province of Extremadura.
External relations.
Proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Sergio prohibiting the modification of vehicle mapless in the city of Naga providing penalties incentive.
Committee on Public Safety.
Proposed uh ordinance authored by the Honorable Sergio amending ordinance on the Naga City Blood Program.
Committee on Health.
Uh proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Francisco Mendoza imposing a rental fee for the commercial use of the Naga City boom truck by private entities.
Committee on Ways and Means.
Uh resolutions of the Naga City uh people council urging the Sangunyang Panglusod of Naga to conduct an investigation in aid of legislation on the implementation of infra projects in Naga City.
Committee on Infrastructure.
Uh proposed uh resolution of Honorable Alan Riz Makaraig on rainwater rain of what rainwater runoff mitigation ordinance.
Where shall we refer that?
The Committee on Infra and Disaster, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Committee on Infrastructure and Disaster. Committee on Disaster Mitigation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
A letter from the city mayor requesting for the passage of an ordinance reverting to unappropriated balance the amount of nine hundred twenty-three thousand out of the savings for the month of August and September for from select PS account of the city government.
Committee on Appropriation.
Another letter from the city mayor with requesting for an ordinance authorizing the charging against current appropriation of the city assessor the total amount of two thousand sixty-seven point eighty-seven.
Again, Committee on Appropriation.
And another letter from the city mayor requesting for a passage of an ordinance authorizing the charging against the current appropriations the amount of four hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-four point eighty-four to cover payment of prior year's obligation to various suppliers.
Committee on Appropriation.
And other matters. Uh item number one is a letter dated September thirty of Petronilo Manalo of Sabelia, Naga City. Um
We take note of this.
Containing the summon.
Item.
Third Quarter Status Report of the Police Administrative Cases Investigation under the FLEB.
Okay, we take note of it.
Letter dated October first of Reverend Rex Andrew Alarcon indicated that he had received the copy of Resolution number twenty twenty five six two three which expressed solidarity and support of the Sangunyang Panglusod to the church lead prayer rally.
We take note of that item.
Letter dated October first of Attorney Jose Marie Carpio and Associates containing the supplemental demand for return of possession of privately-held and vacant or idle portion of the Jimenez Mariano properties.
Noted.
A letter dated October two of Attorney Angelo Castro um containing his response to their letter dated September eleven and October first.
We take note of that.
Another are the uh communications from the Philippine Councilors League. The first is the continuing local legislative education program, and then the second is the capacity development training on inclusion participatory governance and reorganization of original.
Noted.
And then noted all. And next is the nominal voting.
Counselor Rosales.
May I move to transfer all resolutions and ordinances to nominal voting and approve the same.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? There being that, the motion is approved.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, before the adjournment.
Yes, Counselor.
Mr. Chair, before the adjournment.
Okay, Counselor Sergio.
Thank you. May I request that the three legislations I proposed and have been considered by this uh august chamber um to include my counterpart as proponents.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all.
Counselor Mendoza and then Counselor Riz.
Uh, Mr. Chair, may I request for reconsideration of the previous ruling on the matter of the request of the city mayor for authority to enter in Tomawa with the Naga College Foundation in relation to the updating of their business plan. Uh that was deferred because I was questioning why Oli was not included. Attorney Nina uh informed me that Oli is included in a separate agreement, not with Naga College Foundation but with another institution. So with that, Mr. Chair, I move that we pass a resolution authorizing the city mayor to enter into Tomawa with NCF on that matter. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Counselor Riz Makaraig.
Uh just a point of order, Mr. Chair. Uh the uh committee on uh oversight committee of this uh August body, Mr. Chair, has one pending item. The COA report of twenty twenty-four, which maybe we could already calendar for hearing, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we will be coming up with the uh
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh hearing. Madam Secretary, please take note of that, and then you come up with the final schedule for the for the oversight committee. Adjourned.